I'm glad everybody could come out. It looks like we have a special evening tonight with a lot of nice, good-looking young guests in here, so we're happy to have them. We'll recognize them in a few minutes. So we'll start with the invocation. I saw Pastor Bob Ferguson from Madison Avenue. He's gonna come up and do that, and then after that, we'll do the pledge to the flag. Pastor?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Councilman. Real quickly, don't pray yet. Romans thirteen one, "Let everyone be subject to the governing authorities where there is no authority except that by which God has established." It's the nature under which you serve and under which we proclaim again God's judgment. Please join with me in prayer. Father, we just thank you this evening for the blessings that you share with us. Sometimes we look at the rain and the things that go on around us, and we see them as a hindrance or a difficulty. But Father, we know the results of what drought is about, and we thank you, Father, for the fact that you take care of us in that respect. I pray, Father, that these individuals who are here tonight, who are leading us, those who would govern us, Father, that you would give them guidance, that you would give them assurance, and Father, that they would come to you looking for the answers that they need to know. Father, I thank you for each of the individuals who's here tonight and those who are in our community that could not be, and pray, Father, that you would bless us as we encourage one another to be and do what you'd have us be. We just thank you for the city of Goldsboro, and we thank you for the opportunity that each of us have to be a part of it. I thank you for this evening. I thank you for each of these who are here, for I ask all these things in Jesus' name. Amen.
And I appreciate you coming, and thank you for all you do with our police department. We appreciate all your help. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We'll have roll call?
Mayor Allen.
Here.
Mayor Ferguson.
Here.
Councilmember Wilkins.
Here.
Councilmember Rodaway.
Here.
Councilmember Stevens.
Here.
Councilmember Foster.
Present.
Councilmember Mann.
Yeah. We're all here. We've got the approval of the amendments from the work session, regular meeting of April eighteen, two thousand sixteen, and May two, two thousand sixteen, for approval.
Moved to a dot.
Any discussion? All persons say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next, we'll move to public comment period. If there's anybody else who'd like to speak for up to three minutes, we welcome you to come. You'll just have to give the clerk your name and address. Is anybody who'd like to speak? Yes, ma'am. If you will give her your name and address, and you have up to three minutes. Good evening.
Hi. Did you know one in three children, one in five elderly people, and sixty-two percent of households in Wayne County suffer from food insecurities, and only eighteen percent of the children receiving free and reduced lunches will have adequate food over their summer break? My name is Mackenzie Henson. I am twelve years old, and I own and operate the Make a Difference Food Pantry in the Graytham Community. Last month, I served eleven hundred and eighty-four people, sixty-four elderly people in my mobile food pantry, and sixty-four children in my Bat Pack Buddy Program. I am here to invite you to participate in the Father's Day Grill off June eighteenth at the Wayne County Fairgrounds sponsored by Tyson Foods, who will be flying in from Arkansas to help me host the event. The band Old Solar Edition will be providing me entertainment. I am honored to be featured in a Tyson's Food Documentary about my pantry and efforts to stop hunger in my community. All proceeds will flow in my Summer Feed the Kids program, in which I will provide a hot meal and a food bag weekly to children in need. Please spread the word, grab your grilling partner, and join me in stopping hunger one meal, one family at a time. Together, we can make a difference. Thank you.
Well, thank you very much, and we want to commend you for what you're doing in the community. I've read about you several times in the paper, and you're quite a young lady.
Thank you.
You just keep doing this and keep helping people, because it's a great, great calling. And I'm sure some of us will be there for your event.
I'll be there.
And thank you very much for coming tonight.
Very good. And what time is it again?
The team will arrive at seven o'clock, and the turn-in, Tyson will be providing the chicken and the baby back recipe to grill, and the entry for those is twelve thirty for the chicken and one thirty P.M. for the pork.
So we can have our own cooking team there if we want it?
Yes, sir.
We got a couple of good cooks in this group. All right. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for coming.
Thank you.
Would anybody else like to speak? Anybody else? Good evening, sir. If you will give our clerk your name and address, please, sir.
Now, you buy them ditches again in Little Washington?
Aye.
It's never gonna cut, and you got a machine that one man can clean them clean out like they did last year. What's the hole?
I thought y'all did it.
We cut it, but we couldn't cut it all. And I talked to Scott, and he said he was gonna try to do something. Can we get a commitment, sir?
Councilman Williams, I am looking into it. I will tell you, it's a ditch that has no public water from city properties, and again, that's been the challenge. And we have cut that ditch in the past, but it is not ours to cut, and so we have tried to get back into the areas that are ours to cut. So I can't commit to cutting it from the city's perspective today, but we haven't given up on trying to help through that either.
What was the address?
Eight oh-two Washington Court. And look, what about the ditch running down through the park? That ditch gets flooded out here, flood out everybody around there. It been flooded down there two or three years. Don't nobody remember when it been flooded out down in Little Washington? You bet.
Well, if you're talking about back in the recent years?
Yeah, it flooded out, and all the people, lady, a schoolteacher, water running through her windows, Mr. Cobb there, lost the house, all the houses down there, two or three, houses down there now, where it been flooded out. They done towed the houses down, some of them.
Yes, sir.
They don't know the people way blown through the house, and that's why they got talk about keeping the grass cooked down there. And the whole lot of houses went, got flooded out, the people moved out, and the meal new, and ain't no good down there. And I'm gonna tell this to them, say, "Lord, come up here and tell you, y'all think I'm playing. The couple of other hurricane, you got shitty looking, that's like your old New York shit, on Broadway, down there looking like. Cut, come down there and do what you supposed to do."
We will come check your grass.
This man know me. I worked thirty-five years and five months with him.
I'm sorry.
And I'm sorry too.
But we will, we will come check your grass. I said, but we will come check on your grass and see if we can get you a better answer. I'm sorry, I think we thought it was, or I thought it was taken care of. Anybody else like to speak?
It's in the city, it's in the city, nobody talking about. I'm down there, he's trying to figure it out. How many city living down there for my house?
All right, sir. Good evening.
Good evening. How are you all doing today? I came today. I know we are supposed to get our community garden land. I'm representing the village, name's Revanda Jacobs. I'm also a local business owner, and honestly, I came here today to let you know I appreciate everything that you all have tried to do to work with us and try to make things happen. But honestly, due to, I see a lack of integrity. I see a lack of true commitment to really understanding the community and doing what's best for the community. And all of you, I'm sure, are businessmen as well, and you choose who you want to do business with. And I believe I try to hold our organization to a very high standard of business ethics. There's been some things that have transpired. One of the guys who was even a member of our organization, he's had some things happen. They tried to actually threaten his livelihood in some situations due to some of the statements and things that have been said. I do understand there is something called the law, and there's policies and ordinances. There's also something that is higher than just some law that you can put on paper. It's called universal law. It's God's law of integrity and just what's right. And I see a lot of just not what's right, and a lot of the things happening in this city. And as a businessperson, I really don't want to do business with a business that I see not operating under its full level of true business ethics and integrity. So I thank you for your offer. I thank you for sitting down and talking to us and working with us, but we choose not to do business with people who we don't feel like hold a high standard of business ethics and integrity in doing what's right for the people and by the people. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ma'am, ma'am, ma'am. Hi. I just, for clarity, I just want to know when you say "you people..."
The city of Goldsboro, honestly, I don't know, I can't pinpoint. I know Councilman Williams has worked very hard on our behalf. I know Councilman Foster has worked very hard. I know Mr. Acock has tried to do a lot of things. But as a whole, when you're looking at the things that are happening in our city, the past couple of months, just with the budgeting, when we see the real issues that are happening in our city, and people still choose to put monies towards things that are very frivolous and have no purpose in our city, as a true resident and a business owner for over fifteen years, I cannot do business and hold myself in the same standing with people who choose to make decisions with lack of integrity.
Sorry.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening. This is my first visit here. I'm a bit nervous, but I'd like to first thank everybody. And my reason for coming is I live at Seymour Homes. That's East Carolina Regional Housing. And I love my community. I've always been a volunteer in lots of different things, especially in the housing developments, because I've lived in most of my life. And I'm here just to let people be aware that we have a lot of talented people in our area, and we're not defined by our neighborhood just because we live in a housing development. We have so much talent going on, I rally for the support of children. That is my desire, to help the kids. And I want to get all the support I can from the community, whoever see me, where I'm knocking on doors, what have you, to address the issue of doing stuff for our kids during the summer. I'm in the process of now of trying to get the center opened up where I live at, so that we can have an onsite development for our kids to go to. They don't have to leave the area, get on a bus, go anywhere, it'd be a lot safer. It's a lot of, we're living in critical times, and so I want to do my part. And we all have skills and talents and stuff that we can contribute, and it's my desire to help in any way I can. So if anybody see me around town, and I'm trying to help the kids, and you know of anything that you can, anything you can tell me to help me, I appreciate it, because it's, when you're doing the footwork, it's a lonely job, you know, until you get things started. So that's my desire.
I will tell you one thing I do know, that Gateway has offered to give all the kids like that in that area a free voucher or pass to get on the bus, a card, where they can go to like W.A. Foster, the library, Boys Club, because some of them said they didn't have transportation.
Yes.
So just so, and that's something that the manager's office and the Gateway folks would work on for you or with you if you get to where you see that as being a problem. So just keep that in your mind.
But there is a minimum age that they can ride, if they're younger than twelve, I think.
I don't know, I didn't hear that.
Then they have to be accompanied by somebody else.
That's a start. That's positive for me, encouraging.
Well, thank you for what you're doing, and if we can help, please let us know.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am. Would anybody else like to speak? Anybody else? Okay, we'll close the public comment period, and we'll move on to presentations, and we got this good-looking, fine, young group called the Mayor's Youth Council here, and I guess we're gonna do some presentations with y'all. Right? All right.
Before we present, I want to say a few things, if that's okay, Mayor Allen. Sorry to back you up there. Greetings, Mayor Allen and fellow councilmen. It is an honor to be here with you this evening. My name is Lou Rose, and I am currently serving in the role of Goldsboro Youth Council Advisor. Goldsboro Youth Council has had a great year, full of opportunities and learning. Thank you for giving the students in Wayne County the opportunity to engage in the legislative process at the state and local level through civic engagement and community service. At this time, I'd like to have a few members just stand up at their seats. I'd like to recognize our newly-elected Goldsboro Youth Council Executive Committee for two thousand sixteen and two thousand seventeen. So if you would please stand. Davia Webb, she is our chair for next year. Morgan Yeverton, vice chair. Navia Dixit, recording secretary. Ty Hammer Yeverton, corresponding secretary. Andrew Bolt, treasurer. And Diamond Atkinson, sergeant of arms. Now, I'd also like to say that Goldsboro Youth Council is very honored to have a member of our, at the state level next year, Ms. Davia Webb.
Oh, good. Wow.
Will be serving in the role as state secretary for the North Carolina Youth Council for two thousand sixteen, two thousand seventeen. And I really, I'm gonna put her on the spot. Tell me a little bit about your experience. With what? Yes.
Okay. So my experience on the youth council has been really positive for me. When I first came into the youth council in ninth grade, I was really shy and awkward. I'm like, I don't want to do anything. I don't want to be like out there and like spontaneous, outspoken. But now I think that I am, you know, pursuing multiple positions on the boards throughout the years, and even like going up in front of all the youth councils of the state and getting elected as secretary. So I really appreciate this organization a lot. It's done a lot for me, and I know it does a lot for other people, too.
Good job.
Good job.
At this time, I'd like to recognize our Goldsboro Youth Council seniors with a little token of appreciation, and I'd like for Mayor Allen to please help me pass this out.
I'm scared to do anything. I'm just gonna stand.
Emmanuel Adaloy.
Thank you. He asks a lot of good questions.
Tekeah Banks.
I'm gonna stay a little short.
Nia Battle. Deanna Daniels. Deanna Daniels.
She was itching to get away.
Taylor Daniels.
I don't understand why.
Is it that I got away? Yeah. That's the right one.
Jessica Coser. Ashley Laramore. Amon McEaren? McEaren, I don't know how to say it by now. Rihanna Reed. Alexis Whitfield.
She's done really well, spider father.
And Leah Weaver. We have, we have one more thing. Each year, Goldsboro Youth Council members work really hard during Christmas time. I'm sure you probably saw them wrapping presents to raise money for scholarships. This year, we have two five-hundred-dollar scholarships that will be given away, and we had six seniors to actually apply for this scholarship, went through the interview process, did a great job. We had two candidates that were selected for the scholarship, and I really kept it secret. I don't, this is my first unveiling.
All right.
So I'm gonna ask Mayor Allen to please call the names out.
Holden Cox.
You got, you got something to pack.
Congratulations, straight up. Amy Weaver.
Leah. And Leah is already at summer with college, so I'm, I'm.
I'm sure you'll get it.
I will get that to her, so thank you. It's been a good year, guys. We wish you well. Thank you. Did you have something else?
Yeah, I think two things. First off, Lou, we'll thank you for what you've done with this group of great kids. You've worked hard with them, and we really appreciate your efforts on it. And to you kids, y'all are the cream of the crop. Y'all have been awesome. You need to take it and keep going, right? Education is everything. You know that.
As I said, the cream of the crop. But keep helping us with other kids, right? It's a tough world out there. So we just wish all of you the very best in your future. And I think Councilmember Stevens, you said you want to make a comment?
Yes.
So I'm gonna let Councilmember Stevens take the comment.
While Councilman Stevens is coming in, I'm gonna read, I'm gonna tell you my little slogan I like to say. Every year when kids graduate, I've taught, been in education for twenty-eight years, and this is my favorite quote from Dr. Seuss, and so I'm gonna leave you with this. "You're off to great places. Today is your day. Your mountain is awaiting, so get on your way."
Pretty good. All right.
Well, we're finally here. I've worked very hard with you since I've come in to office, and I've seen you all grow and become great and lovely students, and now you're at your final peak. I would say you don't leave as you're done growing, because you're not done growing. Just because you graduated high school and stepped across that stage, your minds will continue to expand, and you will continue to have great experiences. I want to say to each and one of you, as it was told to me once, never let this be the end of your story, because you are all a part of a never-ending story, you know? I was given, to me, a chapter to start off with is hope and imagination. Always have hope, never let your imagination stop you. Go beyond the bounds of what you think and break outside that box and continue to grow. So I give you a first chapter for you. Let it be peace and love, and you grow from that, and you take that wherever you go and make sure your world is filled with peace and love, and share that with everyone that you can come in contact with. And remember that you are always welcome here in the city, and that you all are a part of a never-ending story, and never let it end with you. Continue to, let that story flourish with you always. Thank you.
Any other councilman?
I had the opportunity to come here and watch you guys in the chairs, and you guys were amazing. You made us look unprofessional. I'm gonna be honest with you, I wish that the audience could have seen you guys. I was so proud, and I said, I gotta go do some homework now, because you always asking me tons of questions, and I didn't even know how to answer them, I'm gonna be honest with you. But keep up the good work, much success to all of y'all, and I hope, you know, that, you know, you reach your dreams.
All right. Thanks, guys. Thanks so much. Thank you. All right, with that, we'll move to the Golden Star Award, and I guess Thays.
Good evening again, mayor and council. Tonight, I come before you in continuation of awarding the recipients for our Golden Star Award, and tonight, we have a group award of employees that we would like to recognize for our May Award, and I'll call up the group, and then I'd also like to ask that if Ms. Karen Bershier would also come forward and just give you all just a brief summary of why she thinks that these individuals are our May Star Awards. So first, please, I'd like to call up Brandon Battle, Preston Fason, Michael Reed, James Roach, Columbus Junior Taylor, and Jerome Vaughn. And then after Karen gives her brief summary, I'd like to ask the mayor to come down and do the presentation, and then if everyone will stick around for a group photo. Karen.
Bigger than you are, Karen. Better be nice.
These are my good friends, so, Mr. Mayor, city council members, for one, I want to thank the mayor for making these Golden Star Awards possible, to recognize really special city employees that have gone above and beyond in their regular duties, and just want to share with you that these guys are just part of a team. And there's also another gentleman, Brandon Battle, couldn't be with us because he has to go to work tonight at ten P.M. as well as Preston, because they're on the unidirectional flushing crew, so they're gonna work all night till six A.M. and make sure that all the water lines are clean. So, but these are the guys that, a lot of the, no one knows, even some of the city employees don't even know what they do, but in this particular case that I wanted them recognized for, and was in March, I think it was March twelfth, a vehicle struck a fire hydrant over on Edgerton and Jefferson Streets, and it was Saturday night, and nine P.M. they came in, and they worked till six A.M. and got the, there was two blocks of houses that didn't have any water, but they worked all night, got water restored safely to these homes. But people don't even know, they're all sleeping, but they don't know what these guys are doing all night in, under difficult conditions. I've done all-nighters with these guys before on different projects. I didn't particularly do this one. I didn't know till later about what they had done, but I'm so proud of them, and I want the council to know about them, and I, and also want the citizens of North Carolina, well, of Goldsboro and North Carolina to know, we have some of the best guys ever working for a city, and they do so much for us. We can produce water, we can treat wastewater, but if these guys don't make it happen in the metal, it, you know, there's no sense.
Someone's got to deliver it.
Someone's got to deliver it, and they do, and they work really, really hard, and they're really good guys. They, you know, you do a whole weekend like that. So, you know, I want to thank you guys again, and I just wanted you to know about it, but also thank you, Mayor, for making this possible.
Thank you, Karen.
It was cold that night, cold and rain. It wasn't really cold that night.
They even do it during icy cold.
No, that night was cold.
And hot. I've seen them do it during the worst, worst heat, too, so.
How are you doing, this, but you're gonna let me present?
Yes, present them individually, and then we all.
Brandon.
Brandon.
Brandon's working tonight, well, so far so good.
Put my little press on. Look there. James. Thanks for all you did.
James. Thank you, sir.
Here, you probably want that part, too.
That's all right.
That must be.
So now we can get group photo.
Hold on, come on, come right here. Come on right here. Come on right here.
Boy, you smiling.
No, he didn't smile. You, you, you have to smile a little better. Y'all make me feel good. I feel smaller. Thank y'all.
And Mayor and Council, we're supposed to have one other award for Brandon Battle, but I don't think Brandon was able to make it tonight. And so we'll do a presentation for him at the next council meeting.
Thank you. Did I leave that on the counter? Did you get it?
I got it.
Okay, good deal. All right, thanks. Thanks for joining us, pleasure. All right, well, so next, we got the consent agenda.
Yes, sir. Mayor and Council, your consent agenda consists of items.
Oh, we got, we got Brandon's here. Yeah. Well, come on, let's do it. Get him up here. Play like it. Well, let's play like I said. Let's get it. Yeah, you can find him tomorrow.
I thought we were sitting back there.
Well, I couldn't, I was wondering why they were sitting back there. Okay, go ahead. Little mix-up, we're good.
I'm sorry. Actually, John was the nominee for, for Brandon for the Star Award. Now just let John give his brief summary.
Councilmembers, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Stevens. I'm Captain Gillis from the Fire Department, and this is Brandon Jones, one of my firefighters. Brandon is outstanding firefighter. He's been with the city for about five years now, just over five. And he goes above and beyond with just about everything he does. Recognition is due, so the STAR program was a perfect opportunity for me to recognize him. What we wrote, what I wrote up for him, which he helped me do it, because I asked him to, was basically for a child during Christmas was getting help from him and from the crew that we ride on, and also from his volunteer departments that are in the county. That was the main thing that we wrote up on him. Also, in the past, Brandon has assisted the city citizens, and in particular, one that comes to mind is one of the gentlemen came into our station one day on a bicycle, and he was on his way to work down on South George Street. The gentleman's bicycle had a flat tire, so Brandon helped him fill his flat tire up, and he was on his way. Well, he found out where he worked and everything as he was talking to him while he was filling his tire up. And after the guy left, Brandon said, you know, I've got an old bicycle at home. I think I'll check it out and see if I can fix it up for him. And he did that. And he fixed this bicycle up, and he brought it back to work, I believe it was the next day we came back, and actually took it to the man's workplace and gave it to him. And, you know, it's hard to find people that are gonna do that nowadays. And I'm gonna let you, let him tell you a little bit more that he's done in the past, because one of his, your brother-in-law?
Correct.
Was in an accident in the Marine Corps, correct?
Navy.
Navy, okay. Anyway, I'm gonna let him tell you that story, because this is part of what this is about also.
My brother-in-law, Ian McLanahan, was injured in a mortar accident at a training in Nevada, three years ago, I think. I joined up with a group of firefighters from Clayton, and they done a fundraiser called Paddling for Pennies. And what they do is they put in at Falls Lake, and they paddle kayaks to New Bern, and it's a non-stop trip. It's more of an endurance thing than anything else. But they picked two soldiers, and that's what they raised money for, and what they asked for is a penny a mile. So what I done is, probably about 10 o'clock that night, they were coming through Goldsboro. I met up with them. I took them out of the river. I took them to a volunteer department of mine. Got them showers, got chickens donated from Tyson, got them cooked. They got some rest, got about two hours of sleep. Got up about probably 3:00 or so, went, picked them back up, took them back down to the river on 111, and put them back in the water. They raised a lot of money. It was, it was a real good thing that, that they done for, for my brother-in-law. Another thing that we done is my wife is a counselor at Spring Creek. And one thing that they do is called, what was it?
Christmas for all.
Christmas for all, for underprivileged children. So I took what she was doing at Spring Creek Elementary School and brought it to the city. And I challenged all of our departments to help raise money to sponsor a child. $100 is, is basically what we do, and that'll get two outfits, maybe a toy, pair of shoes, whatever they may need. And we done that. Our trip raised the most money for that, and, and we, we hopefully made a child's Christmas that wouldn't have had one otherwise, so.
I just want to say one thing. I know about that mortar accident. That was my old battalion.
Oh, yeah?
Eighth Marines, and he was the Navy guy that was hurt in that, and that was my battalion.
Yeah, he, Ian, he, all of his jaw was completely blown off.
Yeah, they stuffed one down in there.
Somehow, he got his fingers down his throat and held his own airway, and was trying to help other people while he was keeping himself alive.
That's how, they were out of Camp Lejeune.
I want the council members and the city manager and the mayor to know that the city is getting their money's worth out of this man.
Getting more than our money's worth.
I know Brandon applied for a job two years before he got it.
Five.
Five years.
Five times.
So you could have had him, you could have had him 10 years rather than just five.
And that's, he's good. Yes, sir. All right. So, you know, we need to get your wife up here, too. I had a picture of you and her. Yeah, she, my wife, I'll tell you again, the wives of all firefighters and police officers, the hours that they got to put up with, they're the real, real heroes.
Thank you, Mayor and Council.
Are you through, Frank?
I hope so.
Just want to be sure. Okay, well, with that, we will move on to the consent agenda.
Mayor and Council, your consent agenda consists of items B through N. Again, consent agenda, you have items B through N.
Move to adopt. Any discussion? Roll call.
Mayor Allen?
Yes.
Mayor Parkton Aiko?
Yes.
Councilmember Williams?
Yes.
Councilmember Broadway?
Yes.
Councilmember Stevens?
Yes.
Councilmember Foster?
Yes.
Councilmember Hare?
Yes.
Consent agenda passes. Items requiring individual action, we have none. City manager report?
Mayor and Council, I'd like to mention tonight is just the Cruise the Noose Event held by Parks and Rec. I think it was their fourth or fifth year, but a very successful event this past weekend where they put people in the Noose River in two heats and had a lot of people, a lot of commenting back on that. But I'd also encourage members of the community, if you're looking for something to do this summer, adult or youth activities or camps, we do have a pretty extensive Parks and Recreation Bro- brochure, from tennis to golf to fishing camps. And so if people are looking for somewhere for their child to be, I would encourage them to look at Parks and Rec. The information's on the website, or certainly go by Parks and Rec or by the city manager's office, and we'd share that list with them. So that's all I have.
All right, thank you. Mr. Your turn?
No report. I just want to say my condolences for Mohammed Ali. He was a great fighter throughout the world, and, you know, he's a, he's gonna be missed.
Okay. No comments, sir?
I just wanted to say to, I don't know if they're still here, or any of the youth council member group is, if any of them are in here still. I'm going to miss them. They were a great group, bright young minds, just artists, musicians, teachers, future doctors, lawyers, all around great young minds. And I hope to get to see them again one day, and then if they can, you know, I want to say, you know, next time we see each other, I hope you will come up and say, bonjour, Monsieur Stevens, comment allez-vous? And I'm like, I want you to say that to me, guys, and I hope that you be able to have a conversation with me in French, and we'll be able to talk and see how far your minds have really truly expanded. So, you know, I just bid you all good evening, and like I said, class dismissed.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Hare?
No, sir.
Ms. Foster?
No comment.
No comment.
All right. I got a couple of things. One, I do have a resolution. Express the appreciation of the service rendered to Ultra Patrick M. Carceria. I can't say it. It's a tongue-twister. But anyway, he did work for our police department for 15 years, and they did have a retirement party for him. And Chief West has already read this resolution to him, so I'm not gonna read the whole thing, but I do want to read the three points so that we can adopt the resolution. Number one, we express to Patrick M. Carceria our deep appreciation and gratitude for the dedication, service rendered during his tenure with the city of Goldsboro. We offer him our very best wishes for success, happiness, prosperity, and good health in the future. This resolution shall be incorporated in the official message of the city of Goldsboro, and shall be in full force and effect from this the 6th day of June 2016. Offer this for approval.
Move to your dot.
Second.
Any discussion? All of us say aye. Resolution passes. And then on the comments section, even though we had a meeting after, I just do want to go one more time, because this is really our first official meeting after Memorial Day. And I do just want to thank the folks from the Dillard Alumni and all the folks who are in town. It was a big deal in our community. We look forward to working with them, having a lot of dialogue over the next year, trying to get the parade moved downtown. We look forward to them hopefully using the events center more. So just, it was a really, it is a big deal for our community. I just want to recognize that one more time, and thanks to all the folks that came and spent their money and their time in our community. The second thing I do want to mention is we did help hold our first, what I call, community cares event this past Saturday at the Grand. I want to thank all our city staff that were involved, the Sheriff's Department, the several churches were involved. And we just had a really good event, probably 300 or 400 people. It was mainly centered around the Grand. The Grand partners with us, so it was kind of for folks in that area. But anybody was welcome. And it's an event that we plan to grow and keep working on, and probably, we were talking about maybe having one a month. So this group is gonna grow. We're gonna try to foster this program, and it's just we want folks to know that we care. So we, you'll hear more about that, and hopefully we'll do a better job of publicizing that and getting that out in the future. As Scott said, the Cruise the Noose, I do want to thank our Parks and Recreation. That Saturday morning, I saw canoes everywhere, kayaks all over the city headed out to the Noose River, and they had to have a good turnout, because there were a bunch of people. So I just want to thank them. And also, I do want to thank Councilmember Broadway at the DUDC Jam that we had this past week. It was military appreciation. I understand over a thousand people or so might have been there. And it was just packed, and, and he did the remarks with Colonel Slocum. So I want to, first off, thank them, and thank all the people that came out to support our military appreciation. And with that, we stand adjourned. Thank you for coming.